It's good.
Good evening and welcome to the April 8, 2021 Bloomington Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission is made up of seven volunteer Bloomington residents appointed by the City Council. The Commission is advisory to the Council. For most items, the Commission makes recommendations and the Council has final decision-making authority. In certain cases, the Planning Commission can approve or deny an application subject to appeal to the City Council. For each item, there will be a staff report, an opportunity for the applicant to present, and time for any member of the public to provide testimony. Our first order of business tonight is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand as you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice over all.
All right, as we are in a hybrid model again tonight, I will call on Mr. Markergard to give an overview of the process.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, good evening. Tonight is actually our 23rd remote meeting of the Planning Commission. Because of the pandemic, we just have two people present here in the chambers. Commissioners, applicants, and members of the public are all remote via WebEx or telephone. But we can definitely take public testimony for our two public hearings tonight. And if you would like to speak, just put a phone call in to the number on the screen, 1-888-742-5095. And once you're on that line, just enter conference code 846-100-1098. And we'll have this, these numbers scrolling across the screen throughout the public hearing items tonight.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is an opportunity for the Planning Commission and the community to meet the new Community Development Director, Carla Henderson. And I will turn that item over to Mr. Markergard.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me add Ms. Henderson as a panelist, just a second. And just wanted to let you know that we scheduled this item so the Planning Commission could meet Carla Henderson, our new Community Development Director. And Ms. Henderson started March 15th. So this is now her fourth week. And as CD Director, Ms. Henderson oversees seven divisions in the city. Those divisions include Planning, Housing and Redevelopment, Port Authority, Special Projects and Initiatives, Environmental Health, Building and Inspections, and the Assessing Division. So I believe that's around 80 people, plus or minus. So Ms. Henderson is joining us from Michigan, where she has extensive experience in government and also experience with nonprofits and in leadership roles as a consultant as well. So we're very happy to have Ms. Henderson here to lead our team. And at this point, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it over to Ms. Henderson to tell you a little bit more about her background.
Thank you, Mr. Markergard, and welcome, Ms. Henderson.
Well, thank you, Chair, Chairman, and members of the Planning Commission. Can you hear me? Okay, great, okay. This, this is obviously our new world. So I, like Glenn said, I come via the state of Michigan. Most recently, I've lived the majority of my life in Detroit, Michigan, but have worked in a number of cities that are very diverse. Highland Park was like my first job. Highland Park is surrounded by the city of Detroit, population about 10,000, 2.9 square miles. And from, worked there for five years, left there to go to the city of Ann Arbor, which is home to, I know you guys call U of M, University of Minnesota. We call U of M, University of Michigan. So when I hear it, I go, Michigan? And they go, no, Carla. So I'm adjusting to that. So, so I worked in Ann Arbor for almost nine years and was promoted three times during my tenure. But something was kind of nagging at me and I really felt like I needed to come home, back to Detroit, and ended up working for the city of Detroit under Mayor Dave Bing from 2009 to 2013. Started as his building director and then was promoted to Group Executive of Planning and Facilities. Left there, worked at a couple of nonprofits, and then about three years ago, did some consulting work, working for Connie F. Michigan, Gary Indiana, and a couple of other nonprofits. And then COVID hit and last year was sitting at home and decided, you know, maybe this is a time that I make a change in my life. That, you know, one thing we have learned through COVID is that people and time are our most important resources. And you really can't put off tomorrow what you thought you could do today. So was sitting at home mid-January and saw the position come across my computer. And I thought, well, wow, that sounds very interesting. I told Heather Worthington, like, the posting really spoke to me. And so I sent my resume and cover letter in and then went through this extensive process that I joked with Jamie, the city manager, about, like, they, they really made sure that, you know, all the boxes were checked. And very honored when I got the call in the job offer. So it is, like Glenn said, it's week four. And I am right now in a very sparsely equipped apartment at the Luxembourg where I'm moving. My furniture will not come for a couple of weeks. So it's been air mattresses and been roughing it a little bit, but, but I'll get through it. So it's a pleasure to be here to meet all of you. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Any members of the Commission have questions for Director Henderson? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to welcome you to Minnesota and hopefully you, you're moving here at a nice time of the year and you'll enjoy the winters as much as we do.
Yes, I feel like I've been tri- tricked because the weather has been just so great. And a little rainy, but you know, in Michigan, we have the same thing. But I hear the winters, they can get quite cold, so.
Commissioner Abdi.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for joining us, Director. And I would just wanted to say congratulations and welcome to Minnesota. And I look forward to, you know, we're all Bloomington residents. So I thank you for your leadership and we look forward to seeing the great work coming from your department.
Well, thank you. I am, I really am humbled to, to be here. And what a great community, changing, lots of changes on the horizon. And yeah, I'm just honored, quite frankly, so thank you.
Commissioner Corman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm so sorry that I missed the first part of your introduction. I had kind of issues, but I am so excited, you know, that we're, we have you here now working with us in Bloomington. So it's so nice to meet you, so welcome.
Thank you, it's nice to meet you as well. Yeah, it's, this is, this is a new journey for me and that's how I've always lived my life and my career. And I'm really, really thankful for this opportunity.
Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I too would like to welcome you to our wonderful city. And as a Commissioner, I would ask that you keep our city the way it is. And I think the way city, our city is, the city of Bloomington is different and bold. We are different than the other suburbs of Minneapolis and St. Paul. And I hope we stay that way, that we are not afraid of things, that we do things differently, that we maybe take risks in the right way, and that we are a differentiating city and not just another vanilla suburb. And I ask you, in your leadership, to continue that forward, please.
I, I must say, that, that's what spoke to me. The more I learned about Bloomington, my first interview panel was with Jamie and Chris and Faith and Heather. And the pride about, you know, we have the number one tourist attraction in the state. We, the hotel, the hospitality industry, the parks, the trails. And the more I did research, I really, I, that was so true. And, and then I realized, like, we hear a lot, you know, outside of this region about the Twin Cities, but really Bloomington is driving the state of Minnesota. And I'm very proud to be part of that team, so I appreciate your comments, thank you.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to just welcome you, Director Henderson. Big fan of Heather Worthington, so I was excited to hear that she was part of the process. And so I'm, I'm happy that she made a great selection, and welcome.
Thank you for that. Heather, she told me later after I had accepted the job that she had said that she couldn't take credit for my hire because I had applied. And I told her, she said, but I, if I was going to recruit somebody, it would be somebody just like you. And I said, no, Heather, you should take credit because you wrote that job description. And it really pulled at me, like, just what you were looking for. And I really felt like I could bring some value to the team. So I give her a lot of credit as well, so, but thank you, Commissioner.
Oh, I will wrap the rounds, Director Henderson, with my welcome and enthusiastic. I'm looking forward to your time here at, leading the Community Development Division. I think your skills and talents will complement all of the skills and talents we have in our very talented staff. And having come here from the west side of Michigan, I will give you a little grace for coming from the east side. But know that it's easy to make a successful transition and stay here for a long time, and we hope that you do.
Well, well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I appreciate that. And I, I have found that this is a stellar team. Just my four weeks here, getting to know the, the staff. And really, I view my role as one to be an advocate for them, to uplift their work, to get them the resources that they need, and kind of pull the whole team together. So I'm super excited and thank you for your, all of you for your welcome.
Thank you, we'll look forward to our time together in the future.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number two. Item number two is a request for redevelopment in the South Loop. And I'll start with Commissioner Cookden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To avoid a conflict of interest, I will abstain from this item.
Thank you, that is noted. And I will begin with the staff report. And on this one, I think we have, Mr. Markergard, who do we have for the staff report on this one?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have Mike Sentenario. And WebEx is giving me a little bit of difficulty making him a panelist for some reason.
Uh oh.
Let me keep trying here. Okay, there it is.
All right, Mr. Sentenario, the floor is yours.
All right, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you.
You may proceed whenever you're ready.
I think my, things are moving a little slow tonight. Okay, do you see the PowerPoint up?
Yes, we have it, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. So the next item on your agenda is for a redevelopment project that's been in the works for a little while now, a couple of years since I've been involved with it. But it's for Sick Technologies, a tech company that produces sensor.
Mr. Sentenario, we've lost you if you're still speaking.
Shoot. And overlay zoning district, so that all of the parcels within this plan development are under the same zoning regime. They have, because this is a multi-phase plan development, we have a very detailed preliminary development plan or master plan, if you want to think of it that way. We often refer to that as the PDP. And that's essentially what they envision for the build-out of this technology campus. They're seeking approval for a final development plan for phase of that campus, which we'll go into more detail in a bit. And what's pretty common is that the, they're, they need to re, make some adjustments and change some property boundaries to accommodate what they're proposing for their phasing. And with that, because of the plating and the nature of our city code, they're seeking a variance to defer park dedication for future phases. Not an elimination of park dedication fees, but just deferring fees until the future phase.
Mr. Sentenario, we lost your audio again.
So frustrating.
Now you're back.
Okay. Well, maybe things will cooperate with me momentarily. And Glenn, if, if absolutely necessary, I do have, you know, the presentation is in the, in the I drive, but hopefully I'll be able to complete this presentation effectively. So looking at the existing conditions on site, I have the, the site outlined in red. And then you'll see various components or geographic features. It's important to note that this site is flanked by five hotels. So hotel development has been very robust in the past number of years. The city, or specifically the Port Authority acquired this, this property a number of years ago. Was a property manager for some office and warehouse tenants for a few years, but then ultimately demolished all the buildings and did some, there was some cleanup, environmental cleanup that had to take place. So this is, this is a vacant property. It's really important to note that just the proximity to light rail transit. So if you can see in the lower right-hand side of your screen, this is a block away from LRT, in addition to the metro parking ride. This street view is a couple of years old, but you get the idea. This is about a 14-acre development site, so really significant, especially within our South Loop District, which is intended for the most dense development within the city. Guide plan identifies this as Lindell. Came from Lindell Avenue, of course. And then the base zoning district for all these parcels is also Lindell mixed use. So the applicant is not seeking a change to the, the base zoning district, but rather, so all the parcels are under the plan development overlay to bring that all under a PD zoning. This site is also highly influenced by the airport. And so what I have on screen is the different safety zones associated with MSP. And you can see the red on the top of the screen, that's the runway protection zone or RPZ. Development is pretty much prohibited in that red area. So that's why the land to the north, Metropolitan Airports Commission acquired those properties and now it's, it's an open field. But the yellow is, you know, the slightly less restrictive airport zoning district, or safety zone, rather. But for one, one of the uses that is prohibited is residential uses. So that's a type of use that, you know, generally speaking, we like to see in the South Loop District. But because of the safety zone, it, it is prohibited in this location. But however, in the east side of the South Loop, we've been seeing a lot of residential development. So the point is that the types of uses is limited to some degree on these properties. It's also limited to some degree is building height. So I have the safety zones and then the, the permitted building heights or elevations above that. So the, the elevation on the ground is about 815 to, or 810. So really, functionally speaking, you're, on this site, you're limited to about a five, maybe six-story building. So still significant in development, but a tower or a high-rise is not going to be permitted this close to the airport. Now I'll get into the, the phasing and...
We just lost your audio again at the start of this slide. Now you're back.
Okay, gosh, that is really frustrating, sorry about that, everyone. Phase one is a mix of logistics, production, and office, about 144,000 square feet, or 140,000 square feet. You can see phase one is, would be, would accommodate parking via surface parking and would develop the northern portion of this entire plan development. And this is what they're seeking for a final development plan approval. In phase two, we see, in green, we see a four-story office building that fills out the Lindell Lane and 28th Avenue corner. And they, instead of surface parking, it is a structured parking lot. Phase three is an additional production on the northeast corner of the site. And then phase four completes the entire build-out with a three-story office building and additional logistics phase. So this is again, a four-phase plan development or technology campus. One of the deviations that they're seeking for this development is related to floor area ratio, which is one way to measure density, not the only way, but it is, it is a way to measure density. And you can see the, one of the columns, the total floor area, the site, the accompanying site area, and then what that floor area ratio is. And so when we look at the entire build-out, they exceed the .7 floor area ratio requirement in this district. So generally, we're, we're, we are comfortable with this approach, given that it is a multi-phase development. And when we're dealing with a development that is, in this case, almost 500,000 square feet, we, we acknowledge that that's more than likely not going to happen in a, in one or two phases. And so the full build-out exceeds the requirement, but we're supportive of the flexibility to allow slightly less floor area ratios for those, those phases. Here's another image of phase one. You can see the building again, and then I overlaid and...
Mr. Sentenario, we lost your audio again.
If that's helpful.
Now you're back.
Okay, I'll try and be brief and then maybe I'll try and call in, so we don't have to keep dealing with this. But the FTP shows surface parking along with some proof of parking, if you can see that on the north side of the site. Another bit of flexibility that they're seeking is related to a setback along 28th Avenue. In the LX District, we have a unique standard where we have map setbacks, as opposed to minimum setbacks. And in this case, that maximum is 20 feet. However, there's a 20-foot Excel energy easement. So in order to make room for the, not encroaching the easement, but then also allow for foundation footings, they had to set back the building 22 feet. So you can see this area in yellow, that's an easement that cannot be encroached upon. So this is kind of like a deviation by requirement, where they have to make sure that there aren't structures within that easement. For the landscaping plan, you know, again, this is a multi-phase development. So what they're trying to do here is to plant trees and shrubs where, to try and minimize where they have to be removed in the future. So the applicant team really took advantage of our perennial and grasses allowance, where you can, instead of having all the shrubs that you'd normally be required, you can replace a proportion of that with grasses and perennials. And they've done that, but they've also planted trees in areas that, especially along the south side of the building, if you can see my cursor, where that would remain open space. And so they are meeting the, the planting requirements, as well as the, the standard requirements that we have with a, a tree in every parking lot and such. One more, a bit of flexibility that they're seeking for exterior materials. And on the screen, I have, you know, an industrial building here in Bloomington that's comprised of precast concrete. And nothing wrong with this building, it, it serves its purpose. It's a perfectly good-looking property, but generally speaking, precast concrete building is not permitted as a primary material in our commercial districts. And the technology, the South Loop District is full of these commercial districts. So what they are seeking is a mix of precast concrete and glass. And we are supportive of this deviation. Not only is it concrete a very durable material, but we think the, the applicant's desire to have a variety of textures on the precast walls is really interesting and would be very attractive. And so we're not concerned with the, the issue of having an overly industrial-looking building that doesn't contribute to the look of the South Loop District. Here's another image, another thing that the applicant's doing. In addition, having a mix of glass, they have a variety of textures and surfacing, as well as recesses within the building to have a little more visual interest. Further, future phases, like phase two, for example, for the office building is, is almost entirely a glass facade. So the proportion of transparency, which is a requirement, the desire to have really high-quality striking buildings, we think will be met or exceeded with future phases. So overall, we're, we think it's a really good use of durable materials and we're supportive of the, the exterior palette that they're proposing. To touch on parking, for phase one, they are meeting the parking requirement between the surface parking that I mentioned, as well as the proof of parking. When we look at the full build-out, they would seek a slight, a small deviation. And, you know, this, this is... And, you know, this, this is 15, 20 years out. So with each subsequent phase, we're going to do additional analysis as to whether or not we think the proposed parking is appropriate for that particular phase. But generally speaking, they'll be able to accommodate sufficient parking throughout their phasing. And that's really what we're looking for is can you meet the future parking demand on your site? In that case, that, of course, they, they are able to. Now, the, the plating variance, which we don't see too often, but we, the planning commission has seen relatively recently is the way our code is written, you're required to collect park dedication fees for the entire development right away or with the first phase. And, and we're supportive of, of variance to that. So what I have on screen is the final plat and then blue is where the phase one building is proposed to be located on that lot. Yet for park dedication fees, they'd be responsible for the blue and the orange. And so we're supportive of variance to defer those future, the park dedication fees for future phases when those future phases would develop. So we are recommending approval. The, there are a number of recommended, recommended motions for you on two different slides. The slide and.
And we just lost your audio again, Mr. Sentenario. But he's at the tail end of the presentation and just covering the, the motions you have in your packets.
So if you can hear me now, I'm of course available for questions and I believe the applicant team is as well.
Thank you, Mr. Sentenario. Questions for staff? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I guess the question, excuse me, could be for staff or for the applicant. What I'm looking at is, can, can I get a rough estimate of the number of employees that are expected to be employed at this location, obviously under different phases, but maybe just under phase one and two? What is the number of employee additions that we're looking at bringing to the city?
Sure. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Goldsman, I don't have those numbers available. I know that for, for the full phase, I, I think 700 employees was the, sticks out to me as the total. But I do believe the applicant would be able to tell you what they anticipate for an initial phase to give you that answer.
Thank you.
Mr. Sentenario, a question for you on, and I should know this answer, but how far east do you go from this site before we get into the area where it's permitted residential?
Sure. Mr. Chair, great question. It, we try and get to. Oh shoot, that's not what I wanted. Can you see the airport safety zones?
Ah, yes.
Okay. So Mr. Chair, the, the areas where residential is permitted is in the green. So you can see like a, if, if I had zoomed out more, you'd see more of like a triangular shaped safety zone.
Right.
The red is, you know, pretty much all developments prohibited. The yellow is just highly restrictive, but then on the flanks of that and the green is where residential is permitted. So for example, around Bloomington Central Station, we're seeing a lot of residential development being proposed and built. Similarly to the West, excuse me, in the Mall of America Plan Development, residential is also acceptable there too.
Thank you. And I'll see if you can refresh me. In the, the red no build zone, is that space able to be used by the public and say a park capacity?
Mr. Chair, I don't think it is. I believe that the, the area in the runway protection zone is, is really intended to be open space for, given the, the low flying airplanes. And then actually, in this case, the, the area north of American Boulevard is fenced off and the public cannot access it.
That's what I thought. Thank you. Other questions for staff? Not seeing any at this time. I will ask if the applicant would like to speak on this item.
Mr. Chair, we have Dave Magenti as the applicant. Mr. Magenti, you can speak now.
Sure. Hey, thank you for entertaining our project. Appreciate it. I will mention that to the previous question, through the development agreement, we have committed to 154 employees on site for phase one. And then phase two, we've committed to, I'm just looking at my numbers here. Phase two, we're projecting closer to 250 employees. So other than that, I'd be open to questions, but I don't really have anything else to, to comment on at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Magenti. Commissioners, questions of the applicant? Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Magenti, I have a question related to the transition between phase one and two, given that it is a five year gap. And some of the renderings that I'm looking at, it looks like the space, the south is going to remain kind of a green space. Is that your intention? Or do you have additional plans for that space?
Yeah, thanks for the question. So the time period between phase one and phase two, that green space is still owned by Bloomington. So that, that will remain a, from my discussions with the Port Authority, that will remain a more of a field tall grass kind of application. Our intent for phase two, you know, through the development agreement, we're committed to completing the project by 2026, will likely happen earlier than that. That's something I'm, I'm bringing to the attention of our, our German leadership to, to determine the timeline for phase, phase two, but likely it will be earlier than 2026.
Commissioner Albrecht, do you have any further questions on that?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Abdi.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the folks watching at home, could the applicant generally explain what the proposed use is in this area? Like, how would you describe the activities proposed as part of this site development?
Sure. So phase one of the project will consist largely of our assembly production. So I would describe half the, the first phase development as distribution and logistics and the other half as production, which is primarily assembly of sensors. And then part, part of the, the phase, phase one project is also office space to support the, the warehouse production areas. The phase two portion of our development is slated for primarily corporate office headquarters. So currently we have a, we have a 55,000 square foot office facility in West Bloomington that we would, we would relocate for the phase two portion. Phase three is a, is a production expansion. So right now we, we're actually very, we're growing very rapidly. So I think that's good news for everybody that, that we will need production expansion sooner than later. Phase four is really a two-part component where we have warehouse expansion, which again, to support our production and, and our clients throughout the United States, we will, we will need stores and distribution space for, for expansion. And then the second part of the phase four is slated for office expansions, so corporate office. So really that's, you know, you know, our, our German leadership is really committed to this location and, and the desire as, as we've, as we've really looked at expanding in Minnesota is to bring all our employees together in one location. And that's, that happens to be the, the South Loop, which we're really excited about.
Commissioner Abdi, anything more?
No, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? All right. Seeing none, we will move to the public hearing. Mr. Markergard, can you let us know if we have anyone for the public hearing?
Mr. Chair, we had nobody pre-register in this item, but let's check in with Mr. Pease. Mr. Pease, I will unmute you now.
There are no callers on the, there are no callers on the line. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. No registered callers, no comments received, no callers on the line. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Albrecht?
So moved.
Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor indicate by saying aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton is, is abstaining for this item and that's an aye for myself. The public hearing is closed. Discussion. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Excuse me. I think, you know, looking at this application, excited to see the development and noting that the location has some unique characteristics, especially with the airport limitations and height. So I think it's a good phased approach and I'm excited to see so many employees being added to the Bloomington, the city of Bloomington. And hopefully we'll be able to provide them some with housing in the vicinity area or access to the light rail. So overall, I think I'm excited to see this development and I will be in support of the application.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too am in support of this application. My question related to the open space really draws back to the South Loop district plan related to place making. And I think as it's, as this is a transition and there'll be some transition time, I think we've talked about some pilot projects along Lindell Avenue corridor. I think this could potentially be a good site, a good opportunity to try some things, maybe a pocket park or something along those lines, but to make use of the space at least temporarily, if possible, to see if we can draw more folks into the area or have a more of a, I think, Commissioner Roman mentioned, kind of open space and park option. I know not, not permanent, but something at least temporarily would be kind of a fun thing to do. So I would encourage the city to look into that. But I am, I am in support of this. I think it's a great project, obviously bringing a lot of jobs into the city of Bloomington and utilizing this great, the great area that's transit oriented development. So I am in support. Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Gold, or Commissioner Albrecht. And I, I will build on your comments. I, I am pleased to see this business successfully developing and growing in Bloomington. I'm pleased that we're able to retain them in Bloomington. My only observation on this, this proposed development is the, the sheer kind of mass of it. We're in a, it's a unique parcel or a unique block, mega block, however you want to refer to it, between where there is the potential for residential on both the east and the west of it. And then in between, the question for me is how do we make that in between? Is this, in the South Loop area feel at least not hostile to pedestrians? And so I would encourage the, the staff and the applicants, as you refine your final plans, to keep in mind how we develop this area in a way that doesn't feel like it's kind of a barren connecting point between the future residential development near the mall and the existing and future residential development to the east, in keeping with the idea of the South Loop. But I, those are not reasons for me to, to oppose this item. I am happy to support it. I just would encourage folks to think about that. Other discussion? I can't see, Mr. Markergard, if we have any other hands? All right. Seeing no other discussion, there are a number of motions on this item. My staff, I think, have them in their docket. So Commissioner Goldsman, would you like to start?
I guess I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
In case PL 2021-44, I move to recommend the city council adopt an ordinance rezoning 2501 and 2701 American Boulevard East and 2600 Lindell Lane from LX Lindell Mixed Use AR-17 to LX PD AR-17 Lindell Mixed Use Planned Development Airport Runway-17.
Thank you, Commissioner Goldsman. Commissioner Corman?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second for a ordinance to rezone the subject properties. I will call for the vote by roll call. All those in favor say aye. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton has recused himself from this item and then aye for myself. That motion moves forward six to zero. The next motion? Commissioner Goldsman?
I'll make the motion.
Go ahead.
Thanks. In case PL 2021-44, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend the city council approve preliminary development plans for a multi-phase technology campus at 2501, 2601 and 2701 American Boulevard East and 2600 Lindell Lane. And final development plans for phase one of the technology campus.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve preliminary development plans for the subject development and final development plans for phase one. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton has recused on this item and that's an aye for myself. This moves forward six, zero. The next motion? Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL 2021-44, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend the city council approve the preliminary plat and adopt a resolution approving the final plat for sick, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldsman?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of the preliminary and final plat for the subject development. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton has recused himself on this item and an aye for myself. That motion moves forward six, zero. And the next one? Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL 2021-44, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend the city council adopt a resolution approving a plating variance to defer park dedication fees for future development phases to the time of building permit issuance of those phases.
Thank you. Commissioner Corman?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, to recommend adoption of a resolution for a plating variance for park dedication fees. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton has recused on this item, and that's an aye for myself. This item moves forward six, zero. And we have the next item, or the next motion. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. In case PL 2021-44, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend the City Council adopt a resolution approving a conditional use permit for a multi-phase technology campus at 2501, 2601, and 2701 American Boulevard East and 2600 Lindell Lane, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend adoption of a conditional use permit for the subject development. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton has recused on this item, and that's an aye for myself. This item moves forward six, zero. I believe that is the last of the motions on this item. And so this item will move forward to the May 3 City Council meeting as a public hearing. Thank you to the staff and the applicant for their work on this project. The next item is a housing development, 88012 Old Cedar Avenue. Can we have the staff report, Mr. Johnson, on this one, I think?
Yeah, Chairman Roman, can you hear me okay?
We can.
All right, hallelujah. And that's not a shot at Mike. I was having my own issues before the meeting started. Yes, before you this evening, I will share my screen. Before you this evening is a number of different entitlements or zoning actions that pertain to a four-story, 68-unit apartment building located at 8012 Old Cedar Avenue South. Reuter Walton is the applicant of this action. As I said, it includes multiple actions. And can you see my screen okay?
We can.
All right, I will proceed. So as I said, multiple actions here does involve a comprehensive plan amendment to reguide the site from office to high-density residential. The site is currently a two-story office building, so this is a change of use in your comprehensive plan, the land use element. It would include rezoning the site from FD2, which is an industrial district, to the RM50 High Density Residential Zoning District, as well as putting in the Plan Development Overlay District over the top of that. And then preliminary and final development plans for all the site improvements, site and building improvements here proposed. And then also a Type 3 preliminary and final plat to combine two unplatted lots into one lot. Here is an area map. As you can see, this is a little bit of an oddity here, a remnant parcel, where you've got a small sliver parcel, and that's the 1800 East Adia Street site on the south end here, the main site being 8012 Old Cedar. So the subject properties are located at the northwest corner of Old Cedar Avenue South and East Adia Street. In terms of surrounding uses, of course, you have State Highway 77, Cedar on the east side, and then to the north you have the Alina Medical Office. There's other office warehouse or office slash industrial uses to the northwest here. There are some hotels in the area to the north as well. To the west, you have a number of different fourplex apartments that were developed on East Adia Street. To the southwest, additional apartments. And then across East Adia Street to the south, you have another office building. Old Cedar Avenue South is a major collector roadway. East Adia Street is a local roadway. This just gives you an oblique image of the existing site. One thing I'll point out, and it'll be visible in the street view on the next slide too, is that the Nocomas Minnesota River Regional Bike Trail runs along the east side of this site, so certainly a valuable amenity to this property and gives bicycle and walking access to a wide variety of different locales and destinations in the area. Here's street view, as I mentioned, again, a two-story office building. There's the bike trail. The proposed driveway location, we'll get to that on the site plan in more detail, but the proposed access is proposed to remain fairly similar to this image, as you can see it now. One thing I want to, I want to point out is just the Alina site, where if you can see my cursor on the right side of the screen, the Alina site is a few feet higher than the, the subject site. Otherwise, the subject site is a fairly flat, easy-to-develop site, so they would tear this office building down in order to accommodate this proposed apartment building. A little bit of background on this one, you know, typically, you know, prior to a development application, it typically involves just meeting with staff and, you know, preparing their civil and architectural plans and those things, but this particular development does involve the provision of a large amount of units that are designated as affordable at different levels according to, you know, standard practice. And so in order to achieve the financing package to make this project feasible, the applicant has had to gather a number of different pools or sources of financing in order to accomplish it. And so I want to just point out a couple things, and it does pertain to kind of the approval and development timeline for this project, because it is a time-sensitive project. In January of this year, there is an award process, which is a competitive process, where developments, residential developments across the state apply for funding from Minnesota Housing. And Reuter Walton was fortunate enough to be selected for an $11 million award for housing tax credit bonds associated with this project. The catch to that, or the caveat, is that these projects have to achieve, have to be shovel-ready in a certain period of time, and the conditions of their tax credit bonds require this project to obtain a building permit by early July. So that is a, an expedited timeline than what is typical, but we have had a similar project, if you recall, for those who were on the board during the Village Club apartments process. They had a similar funding mechanism that required the, the building permit to be awarded. So there is precedent for the city and for applicants to be able to deliver on this timeline, but it just presents a time-sensitive component that otherwise would not exist. And then in March of 2021, I know the Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance, but just to touch on the council action on it, there were some recent revisions and modifications to the Opportunity Housing Ordinance that were put forth and approved, and many of these revisions pertain to OHO tools and incentives that are applicable or relevant to tonight's application. So I do, do want to touch on that, and I will highlight some of those as we go through them. The subject application is also seeking TIF funding, again, another portion or part of their financing package or capital stack, if you will, is reliant upon that. And then just to note, and this circles back to my comments about the time sensitivity of the application, this application is scheduled for a public hearing at City Council on April the 19th, so at the upcoming City Council meeting, and that is a little bit accelerated than typical, but again, this is not a typical timeline. In terms of the Opportunity Housing Units proposed associated with this application, so this application, again, it's a 68-unit building, and so what Reuter Walton is bringing to you this evening is a fully affordable development. All 68 units meet the 60% AMI threshold or below, and in addition to that, they are providing eight 50% AMI units, as well as six 30% AMI units, affordable to households making 30% of area median income. And so that is relevant here in terms of tools and incentives, which we'll talk about in that this project is one of the first projects, to my knowledge, that qualifies for the 30% AMI lane. Kind of there's, you know, the tools and incentives are, are tiered or structured in a way that the more affordable affordability you provide, the, the greater the tools and incentives are in order to incentivize the creation of those units. And then in the bottom portion of the slide, these are just some of the rents that are typical, monthly rents associated with those levels of affordability. Commissioner Cookton asked us a question, and I thought it was relevant enough to just bring it up to the Planning Commission and the broader public. When the, the city of Bloomington and every other city in the seven county metro prepares its comprehensive plan, we are required to include information that is relevant to the creation and maintenance of affordable housing units in our city, in our community, and Met Council does create an allocation for every community, and it's based on projected population growth, as well as existing population, in terms of what the housing need is. So here are some of those numbers that are included in that 10-year affordable housing application by Met Council. So as you can see, they're, they're suggesting that Bloomington's allocation over this 10-year period is 842 units. So Bloomington, over the last two years or so, right as we were developing the Opportunity Housing Ordinance and then the post the OHO period, we have been making progress in the creation of affordable units. These are units that are approved, and not all of these units have been constructed. But as you can see, that there, over the last couple of years, 519 units with some level of affordability, according to these categories, have been created, or have been approved in terms of zoning approval. If you look at this table in terms of where the deficits are, where are the gaps? The gaps or deficits are at the 30% and below unit creation and the 50, and the 30% to 50%. And that is typical, that is common, for the reason that these are the hardest units to create in terms of the complexity of financing them and the challenge associated with that. And so whereas, you know, some projects might be able to secure some level of subsidy or grant or tax credit that can achieve a 60% AMI development, getting, creating units at that 30% and 50% level creates multiple, typically multiple sources of financing in order to create that end result. So Commissioner Cookton asked for these numbers. I thought it was good to touch base on this as we talked about, as we discussed this topic. So the, getting to the tools and incentives themselves, and I will get to the development, I promise, I just want to touch on these elements first, because they inform what you will see in terms of the final development plans. So again, this project has, is, make the 30% AMI lane, or is eligible for that. So again, this is the, the, some of the larger extent of tools and incentives that the city offers in the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. So I'll touch on, these are all the tools and incentives that this project is taking advantage of or requesting utilization of. So there's the density bonus, the, the baseline density of the RM50 zoning district says 50 units to the acre. Depending on affordability, you can increase that by 50%. They would be eligible for the maximum increase in this case, although they are proposing a residential density of 57.6 units per acre, so that's a 15% increase. Site area reduction, this is one of the tools and incentives that was recently adopted in that ordinance revision. They are utilizing this incentive as well. Again, complying with the maximum, that 30% lane, they would be eligible, you know, incumbent upon City Council approval, of course, for a 50% reduction in site area. This site is 1.1 acres in size, it's 51,000 square feet, so that would represent a 35% reduction. Site width, similar story. The RM50 zoning district requires 200 feet in site width, the site is 165. They would be eligible for a 50% reduction, they are requesting 17%. Open space, this is one element, again, that was addressed in the recent OHO revisions. They are requesting the maximum 50% reduction associated with this application, and we will talk about open space some more as we go through the final development plans. The parking reduction, this is another tool or incentive that they are requesting the maximum reduction under the OHO. The maximum reduction would be a 40% in total off-street parking stalls, and that is what they have brought forward to you in their final development plans. In terms of enclosed parking space, this is another tool or incentive that was recently revised somewhat in our last revisions to the OHO. They are requesting a 17% reduction in their total enclosed parking supply. There's 68 units in there, bringing forward to you 56 underground parking stalls with, associated with the development. Extra materials, this is not a tool or incentive that changed, I believe, in the last ordinance update, but it's fairly straightforward. They are proposing to take advantage of some of these materials on non-street-facing streets, so I'll go over that. And then residential storage, again, they'd be eligible for a 75% reduction, they're requesting a 41% reduction in the one storage unit per residential unit. So hopefully that provides an overview of what tools and incentives we'll talk about when it comes to this project, and some of the things that Reuter Walton is requesting. Getting to the comp plan amendment request, similar to other applications, whenever there's a request for regiding a property according to the city's comprehensive land use element map, we, we look at a number of different factors in terms of assessing the merit of such a request of regiding. One of the things that the comp plan specifies in terms of looking at sites that are eligible for high-density residential has to do with access. It specifies that these sites should have access to an arterial or collector road. Old Cedar Avenue South does check that box as a major collector in the city's functional classification. The comp plan also specifies that these sites should have access to mass transit. This site is within a quarter mile of all-day bus service along American Boulevard, so it does meet that criteria as well. We also look at in terms of, you know, what, what are the surrounding land uses, and how does this land use work in conjunction with that? Certainly, there are some higher-density residential land uses in this area, so it wouldn't be, for lack of a better term, kind of a spot zoning situation or kind of a, an oddball use in terms of the location is concerned. And then finally, we, and also evaluating these requests, we look at what else does the comprehensive plan say in terms of what public benefit is this change bringing to the table? And certainly, the housing element of the comp plan speaks a lot about the creation of affordable housing units. It speaks to the creation of increasing the, the city's housing supply and housing stock, and as well as diversifying the city's housing stock in terms of providing a full spectrum of different types of housing to meet all the city's housing needs. So from staff's look at this particular site and the criteria for changing the comprehensive plan, this site does meet all of that criteria, and staff does recommend that the site be regided to a high-density residential use. Getting to the zoning, we look at a lot of the same criteria with respect to evaluating a rezoning request as we would with the comp plan. Certainly, consistency with the comp plan is one thing we look at. Of course, this application also includes regiding, so if the regiding is approved, then the zoning district of the RM50 would certainly be consistent with the comp plan. One thing we look at is how does the proposed district vary from the existing district? In other words, if they wanted to redevelop this site in some other fashion, what types of uses could they bring here? FD2 is one of the more eclectic or oddball zoning districts that we have, I would describe, and the reason being is that, you know, it's freeway development is the FD2 district, it's technically under our industrial categories, it's grouped with those other industrial zoning districts, but there is a wide variety of land uses that are allowed on some level in the FD2 zoning district, hotels, you know, office warehouse, other types of uses that are a little bit, as I said, eclectic or kind of all over the map. So the RM50 district, of course, is a district that is intended for high-density housing. It's much more straightforward or narrow in terms of the allowed uses that are allowed here, and in order to achieve the density that they're desiring at this location, they would need the RM50 zoning district to do that. Then, of course, they're also proposing to put the Plan Development Overlay zoning over it, over the sites. That's typical of any application that includes fine, preliminary and final development plans. So as I said before, we look at a lot of the same criteria when we look at a rezoning. Again, access to a collector road, check, but checks that box. It does have access to transit. Not only is there all-day bus service on American Boulevard, but the D-line BRT is currently under construction in this area and would have stops on American Boulevard. In addition to that, you know, the, the site itself is not too far away from the Mall of America. It's right across the highway from, from one of the biggest transit stations in the state, which includes access to Blue Line, LRT, Red Line, BRT. So there is a lot of transit in this area, and it, it is a quarter-mile walk to the all-day bus service. Certainly, it's a longer walk to the, the Mall of America Transit Station. Certainly it's a longer walk to the Mall of America Transit Station. But should, should there be households without, that are not auto-dependent, there's a lot of opportunity in addition to the bicycle facilities as well. So we do look at transit, this site checks that box. We also look at what surrounding land uses provide or offer this site in terms of employment as well as commercial services. So there is a lot of jobs in this part of Bloomington. Again, of course, with the Mall of America, that's certainly the obvious one. But other, there's a lot of business development along the American Boulevard corridor as well. And then again, similar to that, there is opportunities for retail and services and grocery elsewhere around American Boulevard as you go to the west. So it checks a lot of those boxes. Finally, we also look at the provision of public open space, and these criteria that I'm mentioning are all kind of found in the definition or purpose and intent statement of the zoning district, the RM 50. And we also look at open space, this site, while not immediately adjacent to a larger open space, it is half a mile from Wright's, Wright Lake Park to the south. That's the closest larger park to this site. So certainly a walkable distance or easy to travel down the bike path to get there. That park has a number of different amenities, including baseball soccer field, pickleball, there's a water feature, there's other things, open space there that make it a nice park. And then of course, with access to the bike trail, you have access to the Minnesota River to the south, and you can achieve a lot of different recreational opportunities by traveling on the bike trail to the north as well. So we do recommend approval of the rezoning. As I said, it meets all the different criteria that we would like to see in terms of a rezoning request. So getting to the site plan, thanks for bearing with me through that portion of it, of the presentation. Getting to the site plan itself, the first thing you'll notice about the, the building footprint or the building location is that it is located at a very, at a minimal or a lesser setback up to East Adia Street, as well as Old Cedar, but close up to East Adia Street. So this is a more urban design. It has, it is requesting deviations with respect to setback, and we'll talk more about the deviations here in a little bit. But this is a more urban design in that the building itself frames the street, is close to the street intersection. So that's certainly the feeling you would get if this building were to be developed. The parking at the property, again, they're providing 56 underground parking spaces, so you can see on the north side of the site, this is the surface parking, there's 33 surface parking stalls available to the site. And then that would sweep down, downgrade into an underground parking garage, which I'll show you. In terms of other site improvements, they are showing a patio here, outdoor area here near the front entrance. Certainly have ADA main entrance available at the main entrance. They are proposing to construct a sidewalk along East Adia Street. The East Adia doesn't currently have a sidewalk along this stretch. And then one thing I want to specify, or for the purposes of the notice, for the folks who may have been noticed for this project or in the description, the original application included a rooftop deck or patio. That amenity or that aspect of the building has since been removed from the design, so just to note that aspect. So primary entrance here in the north, and there's a secondary building access on the west side of the building as well. Here is some renderings of the building, they're, they're proposing a fairly common or typical palette of materials for residential development of this type, metal panels, brick, fiber cement in certain locations, and glass, of course. So pretty attractive, building elevations and renderings here, certainly some warm colors in spaces that contrasted with the brick. And there you can see the, from the northwest view, you can see the trail, the southeast view or southwest view along East Adia Street. And then the north view, you can see this is a little elevated, kind of modeling the view from the Alina property. One thing I want to touch on on the south elevation, well, first, let me say that the building elevations are the next two slides, they're broken into two different slides, and the reason being is that our OHL tools and incentives that pertain to building materials vary depending on whether or not it's a street-facing facade. And so in this case, just to be clear, the street-facing facades for this property are south and east, and the non-street facing are north and west. So in terms of compliance with the city's OHL, that's how that would be reviewed and regulated in terms of what materials are permitted. So on the south here, again, you can see metal and brick, and then in the east elevations, they have different type of metal panel, kind of with a wood grain type finish. And then there's an interior again with showing some metal siding in addition to the brick and the glass. Oh, one thing I want to touch on on the south elevation is that, we'll talk about this with open space, but the initial, and you didn't see it in the renderings, and the reason being is that the initial application did not include for the provisions of balconies on the south elevation. They're now proposing 12 balconies on the south elevation, and that's to help achieve compliance with the open space requirements in light of the maximum reduction. They're not proposing to go below that reduction, and that's a good thing. And we also think that this in terms of, we'll talk about this with setbacks, but we think it's also a positive change in that it provides more activity along the, along East Adia Street than otherwise than previously seen. Similar palette of materials on the north and west elevations, again, these elevations are eligible for some alternative material allowances under the Opportunity Housing Ordinance. Getting to the floor plans themselves, pretty straightforward, the underground parking garage, 56 stalls, there's trash, and mechanical rooms as well. Getting to the main first floor here, there's a number of different amenity spaces that are typical of residential, a community room, fitness space, computer lab and study room, you know, mail and office facilities, those types of things. Again, you can see that patio that they're planning next to the main building entrance on the north side. The secondary access again is on the west. All of the proposed units meet our minimum requirements for area, so they're not requesting any flexibility with respect to that through the Opportunity Housing Ordinance or otherwise. And in terms of unit mix, again, 68 total units, they're proposing 29 one-bedroom units, 27 two-bedroom units, and 12 three-bedroom units. Terms of building height, the maximum building height at this site is actually regulated by the airport heights limit, so they're not requesting any bonus height or any additional flexibility in that regard. This project did require that they perform a shadow study, because again, they had, there was the possibility, or whenever there is a potential to cast shadows on a taller building on residential uses, the city code requires they submit this. What the shadow study shows is that there is minimal shadow impacts in the morning, in the winter in particular, on the residential uses to the west, those four-plex structures. But the city code does allow this, it prohibits a scenario where, where shadows would be cast both in the AM and PM on an adjoining residential use. So just to touch on that, that they did provide that. Oh, I should just say that the max height is 165, I don't think actually said the building height, it's 54 feet at the tallest point. And that's slightly reduced again with the removal of that rooftop patio, they needed a elevator to serve that and some more stair towers, but that's gone. Terms of parking, as I mentioned before, they are requesting the maximum reduction, which is a 40% reduction. This area, this is, site is in the designated transit area. So because they are eligible for this reduction, again, subject to council approval, of course, but because they are eligible for it, no additional parking studies were done. As the planning commission is aware, the city does have it on its work plan to look at our multifamily residential parking requirements. But nonetheless, this is a fairly sizable reduction, without a doubt. Code, the base standard would require 149 spaces, 68 within a garage, they're providing 89, which meets that 40% reduction. And again, they did have a minor reduction in the amount of enclosed parking, but they're close to meeting that. So again, this is based on the unit mix, and it's based upon the amount of party space within the building, but they are meeting the city's parking requirements with respect to the OHL reduction. Couple things to note else about parking, the surrounding streets are restricted from on-street parking, so that can present challenges for a site that has reduced amount of parking. For that reason, staff is recommending that the applicant prepare a parking management plan, and the types of things that staff would want to see on that and have the owner and the applicant on the record for, is that parking spaces cannot be used for snow storage. The applicant or operator has to be very intentional and thoughtful in terms of how they manage the parking on-site with respect to vehicle registration or general procedural or protocols of how to deal with a scenario where there, you know, may be some illegal parking or inadequate parking supply. Should that become an issue at this site, there are opportunities in the surrounding area to look at a shared parking scenario. One of the benefits of having some office or other type uses in their areas, that those types of properties do lend themselves to a good shared parking scenario, but again, that would be incumbent on those private properties to come to an agreement, so that could be a backup plan, should the parking supply be inadequate. Yeah, I think that's all I wanted to touch on with respect to parking. The landscape plan, they are providing a code-compliant amount of material. They do have some deciduous overstory trees planned along the southern elevation, which is good and important in order to provide shade for that southern elevation, it's going to get the most sun. Public Works has been working with them in order to provide an adequate planting there with respect to the pathway or the location of that sidewalk, so shout out to Brian Hanson. In terms of other elements of the landscape plan, our supplemental policy requires that street-facing elevations have 50% of foundation plantings. They're a little shy on that, or a little bit short on the southern building elevation. And then one other thing I'll mention is that it might be worthwhile to look at providing some additional screening on the north side of the property, just in case. I don't anticipate a lot of late-night traffic at the Alina property, but, you know, certainly at 5, 6 o'clock at night, in the wintertime, you're probably going to get some headlights shining to the south, and it's a little bit elevated, so that's something they maybe should think about. That code required, but just a recommendation. In terms of usable open space, they have provided this exhibit. Again, our city code definition of usable open space is area that's available for passive or active recreation and meets a minimum 15 feet in width and depth. So those areas that are highlighted in red would meet the city's definition for usable open space. They are still short from the 50% requirement, and for that reason, that is why those balconies were added. Balconies can be utilized in the city code as a way to get additional usable open space on a project. So they're showing 12 balconies, if the math is correct, and they meet the minimum space, which I believe them to be, they would make up that deficit and be compliant with the open space requirements, assuming that the 50% reduction is acceptable. One other thing, just to touch on, and the applicant can speak to this better than I can, but there's been some ongoing discussions with the applicant about the potential of how to program, kind of the outdoor spaces of this, certainly it's a more constrained or tight site, but there's been some, some discussion about whether or not it would be appropriate to try and program a small totlot or playground kind of amenity at this development, so that's something that's ongoing. In terms of PD, PD deviations, we try and touch on these so that you're aware of them and what is being requested here, and again, all PD flexibility or deviations are always evaluated through the lens of meeting the intent of that district as well as providing public benefit. What is the public benefit associated with this project? So there's some pretty significant reductions in setback being proposed here. Some of the most significant reductions that we've seen on a residential project here in Bloomington, not in one of our, of course, mixed-use or more urban districts, say in South Loop or Penn American. But what they're showing here, and I want to get kind of into the nitty-gritty or the detail of it, the southern building setbacks would be, you can see that there's these one-foot projections along the southern wall of the building. So in some places, the setback would go down to 10 feet. The majority of the southern elevation would be at an 11-foot setback, and again, that's touching on providing that adequate planting area for some trees along that elevation. And then in addition to that, they are requesting reduction in setback for the balcony structures themselves. Those would extend five feet out from the building face, and so a little bit over a six-foot setback would be provided. But again, the clearance on those is a minimum of 12 feet in height, so that projection wouldn't be right at the sidewalk or the street level, if you will. So again, evaluating PD flexibility in that public benefit test, staff believes there's very strong public case for public benefit associated with this application. Some aspects of these deviations, we think are beneficial from a site design perspective as well, in terms of pushing the building further to the east. They're actually exceeding the setback requirement to the west, which is where those four-plex units are located, they would only have to provide a 15-foot setback there, they're providing a 22-foot setback. So bringing that close, building closer to Old Cedar makes sense to planning staff, and so long as they can adequately maintain the sidewalk in terms of snow storage and, you know, constructability and future maintenance, which Public Works believes they can, staff is comfortable with that reduced building setback along East Adia Street. We don't, we don't feel that any of these deviations present any negative externalities or impacts to adjoining properties. So getting to the other deviations, there's three other ones, just to touch on quickly, the parking setback, they are providing a 12-foot setback to the surface parking lot along Old Cedar. There is adequate room for snow storage for the trail, and there is adequate planting area to do parking lot screening as required by code. So given that those two things are achieved, we are supportive of that reduction in setback. Front landscape yards, again, the east, similar to the parking setback, they're linked, the east 20 feet to 12 feet, and the south 20 feet to 10 feet, and again, that deviation is connected to the building setback, of course, that we just touched on. And then finally, just the retaining wall setback, whenever you have a retaining wall in code that's taller than four feet in height, it's actually required to meet principal building setbacks. And the reason that we have it that way is that if you think of being an adjoining property where the wall actually extends in height right next to your property boundary, it's good that a taller wall be setback further from the property line than say just five feet, or even allowed up to the property line in some cases for smaller walls. And so that is why those setbacks exist, is to kind of deal with that massing that can occur right next to a property line, but also have the potential to create, you know, stormwater or erosion issues in terms of accelerating stormwater right at adjoining property. Neither is the case in this scenario. This wall is needed to drop the driveway down in order to access the underground parking garage, so given that the Alina site is taller, they really won't even see this wall. And the wall itself is really at a five-foot setback, but because of the, the design of the wall in order to retain that amount of earth, their engineered blocks, they extend a little bit into that five-foot landscape yard. So it's a four-foot setback. For those reasons I mentioned, staff is supportive of that deviation as well, and that's the deviations. This, similar to the last application, this does include a plat, preliminary final plat, it's very simple, they're just taking those two unplatted lots and combining them into one platted lot. So this involves the typical conditions of approval that come with a plat, in terms of right-of-way dedication for Old Cedar, all the required drainage and utility and sidewalk bikeway easements, as well as that they satisfy park dedication requirements, which for apartment building tends to be a significant amount of resources and money. Just miscellaneous issues that they would have to clean up in terms of just achieving further code compliance, just getting a lighting plan for the underground parking garage and getting that updated, just achieving trash and recycling storage, just increasing that storage area a little bit, providing rooftop screening. And then final point, similar to the application, this site is in the safety zone C, so in that green area that you were talking about, Chairman Roman, this area is in the safety zone C area. The building itself does not require an airport zoning permit, and we don't anticipate that the construction crane would either. But that being said, just as, to be safe and prudent, just to get a no-hazard determination done on any construction crane that would be brought out to the site to do construction. Terms of public correspondence, we did get a review letter from MINDOT, and the first, the main thing they wanted to touch on is noise, and again, that relates to their statewide policies in terms of land uses near highways, it's a little bit of a point of focus for them, just with in terms of noise complaints. I have spoken to the project architect, they are contemplating doing higher-end STC rating windows and doing some noise mitigation in terms of the methods of construction. So they could certainly speak to that better than I. Other than that, no public correspondence has been received on this application. Other than that, no public correspondence has been received on this application. Staff is recommending approval, I do have some suggested motions, I've talked long enough. Thanks for your patience and happy to take questions.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Before I entertain other questions, the other item that MINDOT noted was the trail crossing. Mr. Johnson, you mentioned that the driveway was largely unchanged, do we anticipate any concerns with the trail crossing at that driveway?
Yeah, thanks for that question Chairman Roman, that's, it has to do with the design issue, it just, I think that they were showing some truncated domes. Along that and MINDOT doesn't want to see that because they want this to be a free flowing trail. Brian Hanson, I think is on the call, if you want to get into the. The we or the nitty gritty of the design aspect, but I think that just their first initial set of plans that MINDOT had. They didn't want to see any truncated domes on that, certainly because it's a bike trail as opposed to a sidewalk.
And so the current plans resolve that concern?
I believe so, but they they'll have to in order to be approved.
Right, thank you, Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson, if I read the staff report correctly. This application would normally exceed the RM fifty zoning. But they are able to go to RM fifty through OHO flexibility. Why not just go to RM one hundred?
Yeah, that's a fair question. I certainly welcome Glenn to speak to this one too, but in terms of, you know, where we deploy. The RM one hundred zoning district, I think you want to be very selective in terms of where you prescribe that level of density. It's which is, you know, a very high level of density, so I think that's part of it is you want. RM one hundred to go in the most amenity rich pedestrian friendly, kind of more dense or urban areas possible. And secondarily, you know, with the with the tools incentives that are available through the OHO. If you're able to achieve that with a lower base zoning district, I think that that's certainly a positive thing. One thing, you know, let's just pretend that the cataclysmic scenario happens where this developer goes away for whatever reason. But this site, you know, following a city council action would still remain as RM fifty. Well, let's say that the next developer doesn't want to bring the same level of affordability. Having it only be RM fifty is a way to restrict. What the next development would want to do that wouldn't offer as much public benefit as this one. So I think that that speaks to why you'd want to not apply RM one hundred here. I really don't think it'd be easy to achieve a higher density at this site anyway, parking it would be very expensive. It involve a lot of structure parking and would be very challenging.
Maybe I should have clarified that I'm understanding is fifty units per acre, is that a minimum or a maximum?
Fifty is the maximum in the RM fifty district. Whereas one hundred, one hundred would be for hundred units of the acre in RM one hundred.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else Commissioner Cookton?
I do, but Commissioner Goldsman had to add up.
Okay, Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, I guess the question that I have is around the sidewalk that is being constructed on on Eightieth. Heading, you know, east and west. And one of the questions I have is I'm just looking at a aerial view of that location now on my other screen. It does not look like there's a sidewalk continuing going west on Eightieth. So can you talk a little bit about what will happen to the sidewalk on the west side of the property? And are there any future plans to to construct a sidewalk going west, looks like to Bloomington Avenue?
Yeah, thank you Chairman Roman and Commissioner Goldsman, thank you for that question. This is actually one of our nuances of our code, whereas in commercial or office. Uses, the city council has the authority to waive the construction of a sidewalk if it doesn't lead to another connecting sidewalk. So this is kind of the, you know, the bridge to nowhere idea. In this case, and and on that nuance, the that same discretion that city council has does not exist for. High density residential uses, so they have to construct a sidewalk here along East Adia Street and. Not only do they, I mean, in terms of you could talk about maybe the merit or the. Value of the the little stub west of the secondary access, you know, that's something you could certainly. Question, but in terms of the broader sidewalk, there is a lot of utility and value to constructing this sidewalk, connecting. The secondary access and connecting the the site in general to the bike trail along Old Cedar. So they don't have the opportunity to waive that. In terms of what the future plan is, you know, with given that these are high density residential uses in this area and other types of uses. Where that would benefit from some pedestrian facilities. I I certainly would be as a planner would be supportive of them looking to extend that sidewalk, but that typically has to do with how is A, how is the city gonna? Pay for it, you know, would that involve some type of assessment or would the city use other funds to do that? And then B, when is this roadway scheduled to be reconstructed? Because they they probably would wait on something like that until there was a broader reconstruction effort. Brian Hanson, I think, might be on the call if he has more details about that. If you want, that's up to you.
That answer your question Commissioner Goldsman?
Yes, thank you.
I would echo or I would be remiss if I didn't say that anytime we're adding sidewalks is a good thing regardless of where they go to. Because that will give us the opportunity to connect them in the future and sidewalks remain a major gap in our city, so Commissioner Cookton.
Thanks, Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson, the staff report noted an easement encroachment agreement with some of the overhanging balconies. Could you help me understand what that is? And then I may have a follow up question for you.
Absolutely. Chairman Roman, Commissioner Cookton, thank you for that question, so. Whenever a property is newly platted, the Public Works Department requires them to provide a ten foot. Drainage and utility as well as a ten foot sidewalk bikeway easement. And again, in most scenarios, they try and get the sidewalk facilities onto the public, onto the private property. Within these easements. And so the easements is basically an area where the city has the right to construct and maintain pedestrian facility as well as drainage and utility purposes. And so if you look at on my slide here on the right side, where kind of it's the more zoomed in image, it's a little bit hard to tell because it's a faint gray line. But you can see those balconies are extending from the building face five feet out. And so if the building is at an eleven foot setback, that that sidewalk bikeway easement starts one foot after the. One foot from the building face, so that's so that balcony will be extending into that easement. Although the aerial space of that easement, about four feet, so there's a four foot encroachment there. Given that it's twelve feet above the ground, Public Works finds the encroachment acceptable. But they still, for the purposes of, you know, making sure that they have a. Clean record on that, they still would process an easement encroachment agreement just to recognize its presence. It's a way of the property owner acknowledging that, hey, I'm in your turf or your territory here with respect to the easement, I acknowledge it. And kind of these are the terms and conditions, but in terms of disruption to the balconies, it would be a very. Rare or strange scenario that they would have to disrupt those balconies in any way, it's more of a formal acknowledgement of their presence.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson, and you were starting to go down the path I was trending towards was. My concern that if some sort of utility ever did need to go in there that we could be disrupting a balcony. But you're you're telling me Public Works has looked at this and finds that to be unlikely enough that they're comfortable proceeding?
Yeah, that's that's correct, if if again, Brian Hanson is on the call if we want further explanation, but in my meetings with them. You know, Public Works isn't going to issue an encroachment agreement unless they're unless they're comfortable doing so, and so that's the case here.
I'm satisfied, thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Abdi.
Thank you Chair, Mr. Johnson, two questions, and I think. I found the balcony answer, but. For the low, for the single family, is it, you said it was at a fourplex, correct, the one to the west? The low density housing development that's already on site, there will be no balconies on the waste. West side facing wall of the project, correct?
That, yes, Chairman Roman, Commissioner Abdi, that is correct, yep, the all the balconies that are proposed are on the southern building elevation along East Adia Street, yep.
Thank you. The other question I had was really more about the bike lane that the. That is on Old Cedar. I actually live three blocks from this site, Alina Bloomington Clinic is my family clinic. We go to the park that you mentioned and, you know, it's sometimes we commute by transit to the mall, take the transit to downtown Minneapolis for work. So I'm excited about this development and my family uses this bike lane to kind of go around the neighborhood in this area. And my concern that I have seen with generally with the overall office uses that are in this area. From Alina and moving toward eighty second, some of these large box offices. It's been hard sometimes where you have sometimes distracted. Folks leaving the office where they just go into the bike lane. My only concern is having the primary entrance and exit for this entire development being. Right on the Old Cedar, I believe. So and I would not want, as a resident of this area, impossible, you know, I feel for the neighbors right on this. Corridor and and bringing high density apartment into this area. I'm concerned about the traffic that is exposed to the bike lane that's on site. And also that there is not another alternative for entering and exiting this project. And that, you know, what has, what consideration has been done to look at possible? I guess my general concern is just the traffic demand on that bike lane and just. The, it's a family oriented apartment, I feel like, and I'm really excited to see the development. So I don't know, like, what considerations have been done and obviously with the proposal being that. Were there any alternatives to Eightieth, I should say? Versus Old Cedar Avenue being the primary access and output of the site.
Yeah, Chairman Roman and Commissioner Abdi, thank you for that question, it it's good because it kind of elicits or helps. People understand some of the kind of back and forth on the design process that happens with the development community on the the early side of things. Certainly, at the early very onset of this process, while they were still trying to achieve getting the financing in place for this project, they were also meeting with. Planning and engineering staff to understand the feasibility of this project. And then we did discuss different site plans or orientations of the building. That might offer some level of driveway on the west side of the site. In order to provide more access, certainly, you know, more access in some respects is always a beneficial thing. In in some areas in terms of circulation, it also in this case would take away from some of the green and open space. That is in the limited amount that is available on this site. So in terms of, I don't think any of the site plans we discussed had only access to East Adia Street. Because certainly they're trying to gain access down in the underground parking garage. But I believe that there was a concept that we looked at that did provide a road. A roadway around the west side of the building and kind of swapping the L, if you will, to have the wing on the the Old Cedar side. All the issues you identified, I sympathize or I I'm familiar and empathize with all those things. Whenever you have a bike path in a multi use corridor with driveways. That those issues and challenges and risks can always present themselves. I think, you know, I don't know what the specifically the traffic staff or MINDOT or others met council does in terms of. Communication or education to surrounding business owners, but certainly. All the residents of this building, should it be developed. Need to understand that this is a bike path and that there's always the opportunity for bikers to be present. There are some things from the design side of things you can do in order to maximize visibility, certainly you don't want to see any tall plantings in vision triangles. Near the driveway, and so what they're showing there now is just low lying shrubs. But yeah, I I it's a tough issue, and I agree with you that I think that there's, you know, up and down that corridor, there's a number of different driveways. And whenever you're trying to get that type of facility in a, you know, a highly utilized corridor, not that it has the highest. Volumes or trip counts in Bloomington by any means, but still, it can present a risk.
Commissioner Abdi, anything further?
No, Chair, thank you.
I would echo Commissioner Abdi's observation, and part of the problem over there, we too use that clinic with our children and. Is perhaps the design of the trail when it was built, where it crosses driveways, it doesn't appear to be a trail. It looks an awful lot like a sidewalk or a driveway, and so. I don't know that we necessarily have a condition of anything like that, but. You know, if the trail in general may need some sort of paint or something in a long term change to, because I I've had that same experience as. As Commissioner Abdi has where you suddenly you're trying to exit and you realize you're in a path that is shared. So again, just a bigger design question to think about as our trails are maintained, and I think this one is a. Part of the, I don't know who owns this one, if it's Three Rivers or or who, but. That's for another topic, I suppose, Commissioner Cookton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Mr. Johnson, when we approved the townhome development, I believe it's at Penn and Eighty Sixth. You, I believe, are the planner on that and spoke to us at length about why. Staff feels it's important to have multiple entrances and exits to a parking lot. Can you discuss how this may be different than that and why you may be more comfortable with this application?
Yeah, thank you for that, and secondary access is always, and forgive me Chairman Roman, Commissioner Cookton. Secondary access is always a beneficial design, particularly for. You know, that driveway extends many hundred feet into that development, so even in a scenario where you have. The driveway go and extended difference, it's even more important to get that out of there. But no, you're not incorrect in looking at that this site plan does not offer a secondary access on a way out of the development. And the fire code and some of the things that govern this have a little bit more discretion, they're more similar to the building code than say the zoning code. The planning manager has very limited discretion in terms of where to vary off the base standard. Of of the zoning code, you know, there certainly is variances and there's flexibility which are permitted in your ordinance. But the planning manager is not in a an official similar to the building official or the fire marshal who has the ability to use any discretion. In terms of how the building code and the fire code work in this regard. There are different occupancies and some of them where it's a must, you must have access all around the building. And some of them are a should, if for lack of a better term. Should this property have secondary access, it would certainly be beneficial. From a fire or emergency response standpoint, as well as a circulation standpoint. That being said, when you're developing a smaller, more constrained site. It is, it's going to take away from some of the other limited amenities that the site can offer in terms of the green space or area. That's available, that's not impervious surface. Just getting back to my point about the fire code and the fire marshal knows it much better than I. But it's my understanding that, for example, like a senior housing or an assisted living type scenario. That's a scenario which has much less discretion because this is not an assisted living or senior living type scenario. There is some discretion, again, I don't think this is the 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 most preferable option. For to to solve that question. But at the same time, there's a whole bevy of different issues here at play that kind of represent competing interests, if you will. And so this is this is a development application where the city has to make choices.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abdi, do you have another question?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just quickly. Mr. Johnson, when I was reading the report and the comment to be received from the transportation about the freeway. At the beginning of the presentation, you did mention that the heights. Was changed by them removing the balcony or the top outdoor seating that they had proposed. Was there as part of the proposal, was there an alternative draft plan that was discussed of a taller building, slightly narrower? To allow for a secondary. Deviation of the parking access and entrance and exit to the site, I I know the site is very. Unique in its sense of just how it's placed and just the. The use to the west side, so I'm sensitive to that, but I guess with noise. I know it's at the applicant's expense to mitigate the noise and not the responsibility. I know there's some, could be some potential funding that the applicant could request, and if I'm understanding the comments received from the. Transportation, is it the freeway transportation, excuse me?
Yeah, MINDOT, MINDOT.
Yes, thank you. Were they saying, if I understood that correctly regarding the noise, one, were they saying that they, the applicant should redesign to eliminate potential noise concerns? And if I were to drive on seventy seven looking to the site, would I see the building? Obviously I would see it because I'm assuming the freeway is taller than the buildings? Or would the buildings be taller than the freeway? Does that make sense?
Yes. Yeah, Chairman Roman, Commissioner Abdi, all good questions. On the particular MINDOT issue, there was generations where they, you know, generations ago where they did development near highways and they had obviously a lot of noise complaints. And so MINDOT and other transportation entities have a sensitivity towards that because they've had to provide mitigation or do projects on the basis of noise mitigation for certain types of land uses and residential certainly being one of them. One way that the development community has responded to that is they have put in place higher rated windows and other types of construction that mitigate that noise. So I think, you know, boiling it down to if MINDOT had its ultimate druthers or got its ultimate desire, they wouldn't see residential uses near highways at all. Or even many other types of land uses that matter. But what they're saying is that be thoughtful about the types of materials that you utilize to construct this building because ultimately, at the end of the day, MINDOT is not going to be responsible for noise mitigation for the residents. In terms of, you know, doing a taller building, I think that maybe the, the project developer or his architect might be able to kind of answer that question maybe a little better than I, but what I could say is my guess is that on a project that has a very challenging and diverse financing structure, my guess is that the taller the building you're going to go, you're going to have to implement some other construction methods that are going to be more costly. And every dollar that goes towards that is going to take away from their ability to provide more units that are affordable, particularly at higher levels of affordability. So that's my guess, but certainly I would push that or I would welcome that answer to see what they have to say about that as well.
Any other questions of staff? Commissioner Corman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, as you talk about the units and affordability, would you mind elaborating a little bit more on, and explaining a little bit more to me the process of, on the process of selecting the number of units according, in deciding how many bedrooms they would have? Like if you have, you know, if you're talking about one bedroom unit being twenty nine units and then twenty seven for two bedrooms and then twelve for three bedrooms, how do you, or what is the process that leads you to decide on this is how many we're going to have with these many bedrooms? Do you know what I mean?
I do, yeah, I think so. Thank you, Commissioner Corman and Chairman Roman, if I can attempt to answer that question. I welcome the applicant to maybe speak to that as well. But ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, these, these competitive grant and app and tax credit and other application processes, ultimately what you're trying to succeed or get the award is present the most competitive application that fits the greatest affordable need. And so if you're trying to achieve a particular financing source that wants to see more, you know, family or more multiple bedroom units, then you're going to program that into your development. If that's something that's critical to you achieving that financing. Other than that, I mean, I would think on the basic level that you probably are shooting to have a broader mix of unit types within your building. So I think what you see in this one is that, as you said, the majority are one and two bedroom, but there are provisions for three bedroom units. And so I think that it's probably a complex puzzle from a financing standpoint of we can achieve these rents with these types of units versus other types of units. And we also want to mix and we have to try and get the actual financing in place. And, you know, I, just from being around some other of these similar types of projects, I think that they want to see more three bedroom units programmed into these developments, certainly because they serve families, of course.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Seeing no hands, would the applicant wish to speak on this item?
Yeah, thank you. Apologize, my video is not working, but this is Paul Keenan from Reuter Walton. Thanks Nick, that was a very thorough presentation. Just a little bit about our company, this will be our thirty second ground up development. We're a twin cities based developer. We've done a lot of our work in Minneapolis and St. Paul on sort of tight urban sites like this. So it's something we're familiar with. This will be our second affordable housing project. We've closed in about the last six months. We just are under construction in St. Paul on a two hundred and forty-three unit project on a light rail stop. And so we're excited about this project because it, we really are trying to connect working families to jobs and to transit. And so just some questions about how we pick unit sizes. We are, we envision, you know, single parent households with minor children in a, in a complex like this, we're trying to provide larger units and then connect that tenant to job opportunities and transit opportunities to kind of fix their, as much as we can fix their monthly housing and transit costs. I do have Colin Koss and Griffin Jamison from Koss Wilson Architects on the call with us too. If there are certain design questions, but we're really excited about the project and thanks again for hosting us tonight. And I'm available for any other questions that you have.
Thank you, Mr. Keenan. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Corman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Keenan, could you just, I know you, you know, Mr. Johnson talked about all the different aspects of the units and amenities and stuff, but could you summarize as the applicant, if I, I have a family with school age children, how do I, or what would make me decide, what, what's in that, in this that would make me decide to use one of those units?
Sure, thank you. You know, a lot of it is going to be the rent. And so we are going to have, you know, a discount to the market rate rent, that's probably a few hundred dollars per month. Within our units, we're going to have washer dryers in unit. We've also set up amenities such as a computer lab for kids that need to do homework or for people working at home that need to take a Zoom meeting out of their apartment. We've set up a separate area for that on our first floor. We have a fitness center. We have a community room to host larger family dinners with, that connects to our outdoor patio. And then we're in conversations about adding a tot lot to the very northwest corner of the site where we would extend that sidewalk running north on the west side of the site further north and fence in an area and add some playground equipment and some benches and things like that for people to get outside. And so we think it's just going to be high quality housing with, with in unit and building amenities that are going to be really attractive to working families.
Thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Mr. Markergard, do we have anyone who wishes to speak on this item?
Mr. Chairman, we had nobody pre-registered to speak, but let's check in with Mr. Pease. Mr. Pease, do we have any callers this evening?
There are no callers who wish to speak on this item.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no callers, no one present, and the only item we received was the comment from MINDOT. I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Commissioner Goldsman?
Thanks, Mr. Chair, motion to close the public hearing.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Second.
A motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman?
Aye.
Commissioner Corman?
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi?
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton?
Aye.
An aye for myself. That motion passes six zero. Discussion. I'll say that I'm, again, pleased to see us making some more progress on the affordable housing issues, having served with Commissioner Corman on the last comprehensive plan update, I think any progress we're making toward our twenty thirty numbers is good because our twenty forty numbers are even larger. It would be great if we can figure out ways to incentivize more at the thirty and the fifty. But as Mr. Johnson said, those are the harder ones to get. And certainly we'll, we'll take what we can get even at sixty or seventy, but this is a, I think, a compelling project for a unique site. I do think that, you know, certainly there are issues potentially with the noise of the freeway, with the potential air quality issues being near a freeway. There are certainly probably noise issues with the airport, but I, we have standards for those noise issues. So I'm inclined to support this item. Commissioner Abdi?
I believe Commissioner Cookton was before me.
Sorry about that. Commissioner Cookton?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Abdi. Yeah, I'm, I'm really in favor of this. We spoke, I can't remember if it was our last meeting or the one prior to it about affordable housing a little bit. And I mentioned that I may have a disagreement with the opportunity housing ordinance and that, you know, the opportunity housing ordinance really also has support for preservation of existing affordable housing, which I think is good in concept. But the reason I sort of am more in favor of, of what we're seeing here is, it's just a significant difference, I think. We've, we're taking affordable housing and we're densifying it so you get more units per acre. And if you're able to achieve the same rent levels with a development that looks like this versus some other existing affordable housing, which is very low density and not providing a ton of other benefits to the neighborhood or its own residents as far as amenities. And, you know, just the modern things our code requires like bike racks and all that other stuff. To me, I'm much more as a commissioner, gravitate towards what we're seeing here. It's sort of the modern take on affordable housing. It's amenitized, it's attractive from the street, it's, 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 it's densified so we can get more people there. I'm really in favor of applications like this and I appreciate having an applicant that's leveraged different funding sources and leveraged our opportunity housing ordinance to make this work from a financial standpoint. And I hope we see more of it. And so I'm really in favor of it. One thing I maybe am not so in favor on, and maybe I should have started with this. I don't love that our city code allows balconies to be used for open space. I'm in favor of that if it's available to all residents. But I'm struggling to find the merits of using a single unit balcony counted towards open space for the entire development. And if it were my way, well, I'd at least like to hear an explanation of that at some point and, and I think maybe we can do better. And so moving forward, maybe that's something we can look at, but certainly not going to stop me from approving this development. I'm in favor of it and I hope we see more.
Thank you, Commissioner Cookton and Mr. Markergard, I think as I made a note of that, perhaps look at when we get to our miscellaneous issues in the fall. Commissioner Abdi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate Commissioner Cookton's last comment about open space and the the usage of balconies, considering that it's not open to the entire development units on site. I, as I said, I live a few blocks from the site. At the side is a great location. I was worried that in a new development that would come to this area would be another big box, office or commercial development. You know, we don't have that much affordable housing in this. We do have a ton, but there are much older structures. But this is a really prominent location for transit, very walkable community, very safe community. And we don't even get a ton of airport noise, very few occasion. And when it comes to, you know, outdoor play, you know, the huge beautiful park is only a few blocks from this side where the kids and families can walk on the bike lane. Unfortunately, it is not a walkway. I don't think it was intended to be a sidewalk, but you know, folks use it. So I, I mean, definitely in favor of this development and I understand the uniqueness of the site and and very appreciate the three bedroom development site. And it's very hard to find in the metro area, so I appreciate the the availabilities of a three, you know, unit development right at this location. So, thank you.
Commissioner Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too struggle with the open space counting for the balcony area, given that I, if I lived in a different unit, I wouldn't be able to use that balcony. And so that would not be considered public, in my opinion. So I, I too agree with that. However, I, I understand it used as a tool and it seems like this is a really great use of the site in support of the project overall. But I do want to comment on Commissioner Cookton's remarks regarding affordable housing. I do think that this type of project absolutely is a great amenity. It has great amenities. But I do think that existing affordable housing provides a deeper level of affordability than something like this. Calculations are made for a percent AMI of thirty percent of one's income and it's rare that someone actually can afford that amount of rent. So I was looking at those rents thinking it's near what I paid my, my mortgage. And I, you know, I don't consider myself, you know, eighty percent, eighty percent or a hundred percent of area median income. So I think, you know, the level of affordability I appreciate, but I do think that we need a range of affordability. This is a great project, but also existing affordable housing in which I think is what I believe of more affordable is, and preservation of that is important as well. So I like this project. I think it's a great use of the space. I think the amenity of having the bike trail there, I too live not super far away, but I bike on the trail frequently and I walk around this neighborhood a lot with my dogs. And I think as Commissioner Abdi said, it's a great safe area and walkable and and will be a great addition to the community.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Corman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm also in, in favor of this, this project, this item. I really love the idea of having or bringing more opportunities for families or for any individuals to have access to those type of homes or units. There is one thing that I, I would like to ask the applicant as this moves forward. And it's something I had mentioned before. The importance of working together with families who might be interested in those units. As you have, or as you find several people interested in those, working together with families to facilitate that they might be able to, to rent those, those units. Just because of the importance of continuing to attract more families, but not only with small children, but little older children, you know, school age children. And this is also for, for staff, as, as we look into the future. As we look into the future, as we look into how communities change and how this pandemic has made a huge impact in education. Things might not look the same 10, 20 years from now. So just as you're planning here, you might be end up, you might end up finding a lot of families who will be interested in renting a place and be able to use or to do a school from home. As we can see that many people will be probably going into that direction after this pandemic, not necessarily because of the pandemic, but because people have had the opportunity to experience other type of learning models. And so if that is the case, you know, being able to offer thus the possibility for families to, to be at a place where they feel that they can have that space for their children to work from home or to study from home. And I love the fact that you have a computer lab space that will offer that type of opportunity for all our young learners and that you might have in your, in your place. So I think this is great. And then, yeah, just in general, you know, the fact that we might have maybe families moving in there with the small children, but that eventually the units could become too small for them. And as they look into, okay, where are, where am I going to go now with my family? Bringing that possibility in other places in Bloomington, where later on they can find bigger spaces that might also be affordable. So I don't know if it's that affordable necessarily means it has to be small or for smaller families. But I think we also need to be mindful of that, not for this specific project, of course, but as the city moves forward with other projects. Because it is important to also be able to retain those families that will have their first experience being in Bloomington and having the opportunity to, to stay here and to continue to raise their families. Yeah, thank you. I'm in favor. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other discussion? If not, we have another, several motions on this item. If anyone would, sorry, Commissioner Goldsman.
Oh, thanks, Mr. Chair. I was going to ask to make a motion.
Proceed.
Thanks. In case PL 2021-43, I move to recommend approval of a comprehensive plan map amendment to re-guide 8012 Old Cedar Avenue South and 1800 East 80th Street from high, or from office to high density residential.
Thank you. Commissioner Albrecht.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of a comp plan amendment. All those in favor say aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Corman.
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi.
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton.
Aye.
And aye as well. That motion moves forward six zero. Right? We have another. Commissioner Cookton.
Mr. Chair, in case PL 2021-43, I move to recommend approval of an ordinance rezoning 8012 Old Cedar Avenue South and 1800 East 80th Street from FT FD 2 to RM 50 PD.
Thank you. Commissioner Goldsman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend a rezoning. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Commissioner Goldsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Corman.
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi.
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton.
Aye.
And aye for myself. That motion moves forward, recommendation moves forward six zero. Commissioner Goldsman.
Like to make a motion, please?
Please.
In case PL 2021-43, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of preliminary and final development plans for a 68-unit apartment building located at 8012 Old Cedar Avenue South and 1800 East 80th Street from FD 2 to RM 50 PD, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Abdi.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of preliminary and final development plans for the subject project. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Commissioner Goldsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Corman.
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi.
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton.
Aye.
And aye as well for myself. That motion moves for, recommendation moves forward six zero. And Commissioner Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In case PL 2021-43, having been able to make the required findings, I move to recommend approval of a type three preliminary and final plat to combine two unplatted lots into one platted lot located at 812 Old Cedar Road, Old Cedar Avenue South and 1800 East 80th Street, subject to the conditions and code requirements attached to the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Cookton.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval of preliminary and final plat for the subject property. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Corman.
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi.
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton.
Aye.
And aye for myself. That motion is advanced six zero. This item will be, appear on the April 19th City Council Agenda for a public hearing. The next item on the agenda is a tax increment financing proposal for the property, which was just discussed. A reminder that the role of the Planning Commission is to find whether a proposed tax increment proposal is or is not in alignment with the comprehensive plan. And given that we just recommended a comprehensive plan amendment for this project, this might be a relatively short item. Who do we have on this one, Mr. Markergard?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we have HRA Administrator Erica Coleman present.
Thank you. Go ahead. We have the staff.
Thank you, Chair, Chairman. Erica Coleman, HRA Administrator. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen as I do have a presentation.
Thank you.
All right, can you see my screen?
Yes.
All right, great. So this is the proposed tax increment financing, a housing district for 812 Old Cedar Housing Project. And so tax increment financing, which is a method of capturing tax base growth to result in new development. And a caveat to that is increment captured to pay for public cost and TIF eligible costs related to the development. Opportunity for fixed term for capture, then the new development capacity is added to the existing tax base. And then property owners within the TIF districts pay taxes like all property owners. And so how the TIF value growth and tax sharing goes about is the base value is the value towards the left bottom of the screen before the new development. Then the developer continues to pay taxes on a total property value. The taxes calculated based on the, are based on the base value get paid to all taxing agencies, so city, county, school, district, and other taxing jurisdictions. And then the tax increment, the taxes paid on the new property value, which is captured. This pays for TIF eligible costs of the project. And then after TIF district termination, which we have a term of about 26 years, of 26 years, we use, all taxes paid go to taxing agencies. And so the statutory findings to approve a TIF district are pursuant to Minnesota statutes 469.175 subdivision three. And the city needs to make certain findings that include the following. The TIF district qualifies the housing district. The proposed development, in the opinion of the city, would not reasonably be expected to occur solely through private investment within the reasonable foreseeable future. And so that would be the but for test. So the proposed development would not occur but for the use of tax increment financing. The TIF plan will afford maximum opportunity consistent with the sound needs of the city as a whole for development of the project area by private enterprise. And the TIF plan conforms to general plans for development of the city as a whole. And that is the one that we are highlighting for this project in particular is that the TIF plan conforms to general plans for the development of the city as a whole. And so here is the, the district here where my cursor is, that we are proposing the TIF district and redevelopment boundary, project boundary for 812 Old Cedar. But then I wanted to show you, just because I'm a visual person, the proximity to other things around, other amenities, excuse me, around where the development would be and how close it is to amenities within the area, which you have heard previously in previous presentations. And so financing consideration of a housing district, district. We are proposing a PEGO TIF note of $1.353 million with a 3.75% interest rate. In addition to that, there is an application for Affordable Housing Trust Fund loan of $975,000 with a 3% to 3.25% interest rate. Again, this is 100% affordable project at or below 60% AMI with 21% of the units being affordable at or below 50%, inclusive of six units at 30% AMI. So we just highlight that considering the public investment requested. And so in terms of the Planning Commission, the question to be answered is, does the TIF plan conform to general plans for development of the city as a whole? And so in order to seek TIF assistance, the project will need to conform to the following requirements. No more than 20% of the total square footage can be used for non-residential uses and then affordable units. And it's an either, it's an or situation. So it's either 20% of the units occupied by tenants at 50% AMI or less or at least 40% of the units occupied by tenants at 60% AMI or less. For this development in particular, with the approval of the $11 million bond award from Minnesota Management and Budget, they are at least 40% of the units occupied by tenants at 60% AMI or less. And so looking at the comprehensive plan forward 2040, in particular, goal number two, provide a range of housing choices. This project meets strategy 2.2, identify locations and opportunities for new housing and mixed-use developments. And then goal three, provide affordable housing to certain local demand. It meets both strategy 3.2, pursue multiple methods to reduce housing costs, and 3.3, work toward reaching regional allocation of 842 additional units affordable to 51% to 80% AMI, 31% to 50% and less than 30%. And so with the 60% and below, it's meeting all of those in strategy 3.3. Next steps, on April 19th, the City Council will also have a public hearing and consider the action for this project, for the TIF plan, excuse me. And April 27th, the HRA will consider action on TIF plan, TIF district and the TIF agreement. The HRA has already provided preliminary approval of continuing to move forward with the stage in which we are at this project. And then in spring, summer, late spring, early summer of 2021, begin construction. And so this is the recommended approval that staff has, which was recommended to adopt the resolution attached in the report, the staff report for the redevelopment plan for the project area. And then I can stand for any questions if there are any questions, Chairman.
Thank you for your work on this, Ms. Coleman. And does the commission have any questions for staff? Seeing none. Mr. Markergard, I'll call an audible here. This is a public hearing or is not a public hearing?
It is not a public hearing.
Not a public hearing. So seeing no questions for staff, any discussion on this item? Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I think just a general comment is I think that the funding sources of this project makes sense. And, and seeing TIF presentations in the past, I now understand what incremental value in taxation really means. So I think overall it makes sense and I'll be in supportive of this.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I too agree with the, the observations that Ms. Coleman presented with as far as alignment with the comprehensive plan. Worked on that for a while and find this to be consistent as well. And then with our recent re-guiding, I think this is pretty straightforward for me. So if any other discussion or if anyone would like to make a motion? Commissioner Cookton.
I'm happy to make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I move to adopt the resolution attached to the staff report finding the approval of a redevelopment plan for the project area, establishment of the 8012 Old Cedar Tax Increment Financing District, Housing District within the project area and the adoption of a tax increment financing plan relating thereto to be consistent with the general plan for development of the city of Bloomington.
Thank you. Commissioner Abdi.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution finding the TIF district to be in alignment with the comprehensive plan. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Corman.
Aye.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi.
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton.
Aye.
And aye for myself. That resolution is adopted six zero. The final item on the agenda tonight is to consider approval of the draft Planning Commission meeting synopsis from March 11th. At that meeting, everyone was present with the exception of Commissioner Corman. I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Goldsman.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I move to approve the Planning Commission's synopsis for Thursday, March 11th, 2021, as presented in the staff report.
Thank you. Commissioner Albrecht.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the March 11th meeting synopsis. All those in favor signify by saying aye by roll call. Commissioner Goldsman.
Aye.
Commissioner Corman.
Upstate.
Commissioner Albrecht.
Aye.
Commissioner Abdi.
Aye.
Commissioner Cookton.
Aye.
And I myself, that is five zero one, adopted. The next meeting of the Planning Commission is April 15th. And that concludes the regular business this evening. And I'll ask the commission members to stay on for a moment as we wrap up the broadcast. Looks like we're clear?
Yeah.
All right, Lynn, you have anything?